We'll be losing in the next, I hope, hour or so. Who will take his new office as a member of the Selectmen? And our loss is certainly the town's gain as a Selectman member. Ken Skia Hughes, Christopher Tully, Lauren Rosenwig Swig, excuse me, Lauren. And missing tonight is Pat Helm, who could not join us tonight. I'd also like to acknowledge a member who recently stepped down, and that is John Pavin. He served as Chair of the Planning Board the last two years and was certainly was very active for a number of years. I'd like to just give an overview of the master plan update, basically of the steps that we went through to create this document. First of all, the original master plan was adopted by the town in 1990. Two years ago, a town meeting, the town voted funds to begin the process for the master plan update. In the late fall of 97, a consultant was brought on board. That consultant and team members actually had been involved quite actively in the original town master plan. In January of 1988, a little over a year ago, we had a couple of public meetings to sort of do a report card on the original master plan and to identify areas for investigation and new direction. During the entire time from January till spring, an awful lot of time was spent on the part of the consultant, as well as other board members, on the data collection and updating the information that's contained in the master plan. Let me put the next slide. Thank you. In mid-June, we had a meeting with many of the community leaders, many members of different boards and committees throughout the town, sort of review, draft goals and objectives and strategies that had come out of the effort to date. During the summer, there was continual meetings with the planning board to sort of get updates and continue to refine them. And finally, in October of 1988, we had public meetings where we presented the general changes to the master plan. Finally, during November, some adjustments were made, and in December of 1988, the master plan document was completed. And tonight, we're here at town meeting to ask the town to vote on the goals and objectives. Tell you a little bit about the master plan document. According to state regulations, the master plan has been expanded a little bit to comply with the requirements for master plans in the state of Massachusetts. It's now in seven areas. You can see them all up there. Land use, housing, economic development, natural, cultural, and historic resources, open space and recreation, services and facilities, transportation and circulation. Just hold for a second. I think the master plan, if you look at the document, what's really different from the original master plan are a couple of things. I think it's far more user-friendly than the original document. A lot of people complained about the ability to be able to use and follow the original master plan. The comments we've had from many people reviewed it is that it's a much easier document to use. The other thing is that you'll find that this master plan document is a wealth of information about the town. There's tremendous amount of data about population and land use and build-out analysis, open spaces that are available, descriptions of what we have. It's a very comprehensive document if you want to understand the goings-on in the town. Let me go over a few things that were similar about the original, or the master plan update with the original master plan. It reaffirms many of the themes of the original master plan. Some of the areas, and I'll try to go through these quickly, you know, protect Acton's natural environment and resources, preserve Acton's New England town character, direct new development to protect Acton's environment, resources, and character, encourage diversity in Acton's population, including providing affordable housing, provide high-quality education, provide recreational opportunities, strive for master plan consistency. What that means is that we're really looking to have some consistency in the actions of all the boards in town, so that we're all working towards common goals. Finally, provide for environmentally sound, safe, and convenient transportation, reducing automobile dependency. Those are all the things that seem to be sort of a reaffirmation, and they're similar to what we had in the original master plan. Finally, let me tell you about some of the items that seem to be a little different from the master plan. First of all, there was a direction to strengthen the pattern of traditional village centers in terms of the commercial areas. Want to increase the vitality of the village and business centers. I think a big change right now is trying to do more to encourage business development and diversity. Finally, one that we've heard an awful lot about is reducing the rate and intensity of residential growth in town. Other areas, such as fitting cluster developments to Acton's character, developing a sewage system, we have providing more facilities for walking and bicycling. And finally, helping assist Acton seniors to have more independence and being able to live and remain in their homes. These are some of the general areas that were, where new emphasis was being placed. Finally, the master plan update document is really an overall policy document that the town will be using for addressing the future growth within this town. It contains a lot of information about the town, as I've said, but also contains a series of goals and objectives, overall goals and objectives, that are broken down by those seven areas we reviewed. It also has within those goals and objectives, strategies and actual specific action items. If you look at this document, you may find some areas where a particular goal in one area may actually seem to be in conflict with another one. And it's really sort of the nature of planning and activities in general. You have, everybody wants the best of everything, and many times you have to reach compromises. I think the document will provide a lot of guidance to all the boards and give us an opportunity to continue to work to develop Acton in the best interest of the town. So what we are asking for you tonight is that the town vote to approve the goals and objectives contained in this. You may find some specific action or strategies or action items that are very, very specific. We're not asking for you to approve or adopt those, rather the overall goals and objectives. Thank you.
Mr. Ashton?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen recommend approval of this article. Let me just give a little bit of background. The Board itself, several members of the Board this year, since about last January, or January of 98, excuse me, have been extensively involved in the process of updating the plan and providing input to the planning board and attending many of the citizens' meetings. The Board agrees with the goals and objectives and are pleased with the results of the update. We met with the planning board in January of this year and discussed and reviewed the update with the planning board. And at the time, our only complaint was that we wanted to encourage the planning board to seek out more public input in the future in terms of the process. And so part of my statement tonight here is to appeal to all of you as members of the town. This is a very important document that we're dealing with. It relates to the future of this town. We've taken a number of votes over the last three evenings that relate to the future of this town. A number of those have been relatively contentious, I would argue. I think it's important, as we come to the end of town meeting, that we realize that we're a community, that we're here together to live and to work together. And yes, there will be in the future many more contentious issues, but this master plan update is an important document as we move into the future and as we move into the 21st century. I would encourage you all to take a look at it and read it and remember, this is a very important document for our future. There are many other decisions that we will make in the future that are important, but let's do it as a community and let's do it together. Thank you.
Is there any comment from the Finance Committee? Ms. Rayburn?
The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Mrs. Fanton?
Anne Fanton, Ford Pond Road. I have a question for clarification, Mr. Moderator, from Richard Crosswell and the planning board. Are we, I'm understanding that we're being asked to vote on the goals and objectives, and yet your presentation and the summary and the warrant suggests more that we're being asked to vote on the master plan update. I understand from my past experience that really only the planning board needs to vote on the master plan update to make it official, and I'm assuming that that's taken place. But my question is really based upon a comment that Mr. Ashton made, that there was not extensive public involvement in this, and I know you're looking for more. But I know that those of us who came to the final public meeting, not having been part of that middle process where you took it to the town boards, some of us had questions that went to the strategies. I have very few concerns. I think you did an exceptional job in updating the plan. It needed to be done. There are a couple of strategies, if you recall from the public meeting, that I did have concerns about. I'd like an opportunity to discuss those. So I want to be reassured and have it confirmed by the planning board tonight that in voting to approve the goals and objectives, that's what we're doing. We're not sending a message to you that we're voting to approve all of the strategies that are listed in the plan.
Mr. Crosswell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Let me clarify a couple of things. First of all, to answer your question directly, we are only asking you to vote to approve the goals and objectives. We did have a handout beginning of town meeting that seemed to have a lot of strategies and other things. That was really more of an informational handout. The warrant, I believe, only contains the goals and objectives. If I might, Mr. Moderator, address one other comment that Ms. Fanton had said. In regards to the approval of the master plan document, the way the state regulation works, it is the planning board's job and task to actually adopt the master plan. The planning board elected not to do that until after this town meeting. We obviously would have the authority to approve it, but regardless of what happens here, obviously, if this, if the town chose not to approve this, then something's fallen and broken down in the process. I would imagine that the planning board's inclination would be to not approve it and go back and find out or address the areas of concern. There was dialogue after the master plan document had been completed in December saying, should we go ahead and approve it? We elected to hold off until after this meeting. The only other thing is, and why are we coming before the town? Couple of things. I think it strengthens the value of this document if we have town approval of the goals and objectives. We're going to be using this document and referring to it as we go through and make zoning decisions and policy decisions. In the event that something would ever be challenged in any of the boards, the variance boards or the planning board or something, if it's based on the town master plan update where the town has approved, and I think it strengthens the argument and the legal stance of what we're doing on a day-to-day basis.
Did you have another question, Mrs. Fanton?
Well, I'm not going to pursue this because it's late, but actually, Richard Crosswell said we were voting on the goals and objectives, but we're sending the message to the planning board that the master plan update is fine, and it is. But I would like to reemphasize that at that public meeting, the group that was there was not able or prepared to answer questions about detailed proposed zoning changes as different, as different from 1991. I don't mean to be suggesting that we should be doing it that way, but in voting yes on the goals and objectives, I'm not sending you that message. I'm just, because that's the message you're looking for, that we support what's in here. You were not able, at that public meeting, to answer specific questions about some of the zoning changes. And therefore, I'm asking you, before you prepare the zoning changes for any town meeting, please go back and have another full public meeting when we can discuss those before you move to putting them into written form. That's a request.
The, I don't think she needs an answer. That's fine. Unless it's a short one.
It will be short. I would just let you know that the process of any zoning changes that the planning board does, we obtain public input. And zoning changes do tend to come about because we're receiving public input. Sometimes it's offline, but certainly we always have plenty of public hearings to get input.
The lady at the side microphone.
Hi, I'm Fran Gay, 13 Vanderbilt Road. I just have a question. Under economic development objectives, it says increase commercial, industrial, and personal property revenues, share to 20% within the next five years. I was curious about what's personal property? What does that mean? Does that mean our taxes going up again, or what?
It's really more related to, well, Josh, do you want to take that? I'm going to let...
Most of it is the assets that small business owners own that are separately taxed as an excise tax. For instance, someone who has a business out of their house, has some assets, pays a small amount of excise tax. About 10 years ago, the proportion of commercial, industrial, and personal property taxes as a proportion of the whole tax base was 21 or 22%. That proportion has fallen to 13%. What we're hoping to do is drive it back up to 20% to reduce the burden on residential taxpayers.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Aronson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Aronson, 236 Newtown Road. I'm speaking as chairman of Acton's Economic Development Committee. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank a whole bunch of people who have contributed to this update that changes the direction for our town, at least from economic development standpoint, 180 degrees. First of all, the planning board for their wisdom and vision in understanding that the impact of the original master plan came through and that the fact that Mr. Chernin just relayed to town meeting has caused the shift in tax base onto the residential taxpayer. And if you'll recall, the gentleman who you called the gentleman last evening, who spoke to why we were having so much trouble passing some of the school articles, was really because taxes are too high. He was accurate. One of the major reasons our personal residential taxes are too high is we don't have as much commercial, industrial, and personal property tax base in town as we used to, never mind what we, some of us think we ought to. The planning board was astute enough to recognize this and to take some recommendations from our committee and others and implemented it into the master plan. And I will also say, came to us with basically a free hand to ask us for our advice in helping them craft some of the language for that plan. For that, on benefit of the town, I thank you greatly. Secondly, I want to commend the Selectmen for creating the Economic Development Committee two years ago in the first place, because they too recognized that we were going down a slippery slope that was not helping the residential taxpayers at all, contrary to what I think the well-intentioned goals were when the original plan was created. And thirdly, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to pay particular attention to thank Donna Jacobs from the planning board, who has been our staff resource for the last two years, without whom we could not have operated sufficiently or satisfactorily, but with as much enjoyment and education as we have. And I want to thank the planning board, the planning department, for her help and assistance. Thank you.
And the last, the last comment will come from the lady at the back microphone.
Hi, Susan Mitchell-Hart, speaking for the Acton Conservation Trust. And we support your goals and objectives. They're very good. We did want to go on record saying that we do have some serious concerns regarding the implementation, and we would really appreciate having the opportunity to be on an implementation committee that could possibly report back to the town meeting on a regular basis. We really didn't see anything related to conservation and issues that would reduce residential development. So I thank you for the goals and objectives and, but let's have more input, we'd like to have more input regarding the implementation. Thanks.
And Peter, you have some words of thanks, I think.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you. I would like to thank Steve Aronson, who just got up and spoke, for his diligent, hard work as Chair of the Economic Development Committee for the last year, I believe, or two years. He has been instrumental in terms of trying to explore the ways in which we're working towards greater economic development, commercial development in town. And Steve just notified us recently that he will be moving and therefore will be resigning as Chair, and we will sorely miss his services, and we thank him greatly. Thank you, Steve.
All right, let's vote. All in favor of the motion is red, say aye. All say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Let us see, we have done 33, we've done 34, we've done 35, 36, 37, we're at Article 38, intermunicipal contract. Mr. Fredericks moves that the town authorize the town manager to enter into an intermunicipal contract with any or all of the towns of Maynard, Stowe, and Hudson, and the city of Marlborough, and take any other necessary actions for the establishment of the Assabett River Rail Trail within the boundaries of the town of Acton. Do I hear a second? Mr. Fredericks?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a fairly straightforward article. It actually, pardon? It actually follows from two articles that we voted at the last annual town meeting. And the two articles were regarding the Assabett River Rail Trail, which is a proposed bicycle walking trail that connects Marlborough through Hudson through Stowe and through Maynard and into Acton. We voted two articles last year on the ARR-T. The first article was $30,000 from town sources to fund the initial survey and appraisal stage of the trail. The second article actually was to authorize town manager to dispense funds that were, are to be supplied by the federal government through Mass Highway to purchase and do the acquisition and the initial design of, well, no, actually, the acquisition of the land. The third phase of this is when we actually have to build the trails. This is something that will probably come to town meeting in the year 2000 or possibly even the year 2001. But right now, what we're talking about is simply a town meeting vote that will authorize the town to enter into a joint purchasing contract in order to receive the $150,000 from the federal government. This is a condition that Mass Highway has put on it, and they've been the assigned administrator So basically, what we have is we have the $150,000 funds from the federal government. Mass Highway, as the administrators, simply will not let each town purchase the, with themselves, they have to do it through a multi-town buying agreement. So what this article really is, is simply a town meeting vote. No funds, no addition to your taxes, nothing. It's simply a vote. Mass Highway will issue one contract on behalf of all of the towns. When the appraisals are completed, the funds will be available to cover the cost of the Basically saying the same thing. I think they gave you too many slides. The initial budget transfer, the first article last year, was for the $30,000. $15,000 was required as a overmatch to 10% of the $150,000 from the federal government. We authorized 30 because we thought it would go over the 15. The 30, or the 15 actually could be either matching funds or in-kind services. What that means is if we use our engineering department to do some of the work, we can count that towards the $30,000. We actually, to date, have expended something around 15 or 17. We don't expect it to go over 20, so we may have a budget surplus on this. Any questions?
Very comments from the Finance Committee. Mr. Prendeville?
Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Yes, I'll recognize, first the lady in the middle and then the gentleman in the back.
I didn't mean to pull that off. I was, I wrote up this whole thing about voting against this rail trail, but I do realize this article is about authorizing a joint contract. A concern I have about Acton having a joint contract with any or all the rail trail towns is that Acton could lose control of final decisions in the development process. Remember, it's our parking lot that they're counting on. If there is money available, I would rather see the town or state appropriate it to needed projects such as sidewalks or the sewer problems, or restoration of the slowly decaying historic buildings in South Acton Village. The last line of this article's summary states, "Town matches for future federal funds to proceed with design and construction will be subject to future town appropriations." I understand that to say, this is only the beginning. With all of Acton's projects underway, there will also be the need to maintain them after completion. I don't feel Acton needs another new project, especially when it's forced to enter joint contracts with other towns. Thank you. I'm Nancy Cullinan.
I'll recognize the gentleman at the back now.
Yeah, Dave Campbell, 64 Main Street. I'd like to refer to page 49 of the last article, "Open Space and Recreation." Some of these paragraphs regarding to open space, preserve open spaces which have a value, recreation, wetland, and water, wildlife resources. There's a lot of wildlife on that proposed bicycle path. I've been down there, I live 500 yards away from it, I've seen deer down there, rare turtles. I think the town is opening a can of worms for us to join with Maynard, Hudson, Stowe. This is going to cost a lot of money. It's going to cost maintenance, police protection, pickup of garbage along the trail. I don't think this town needs it at this time. We have too many other important facilities to be built in this town, rather than a bicycle path, which is going to create traffic problems, especially on Saturday and Sunday, for these people that are going to come into this town, park anywhere they would like to. And I'm opposed to this whole idea of this bicycle assabet, whatever you want to call it, I'm against it. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Yeah, Mr. Frederick?
Could I comment on that, please? We appreciate your comments. That's, unfortunately, it's way beyond the scope of this article. The scope of this article is that we have in front of us a vote that needs to be taken on joining the purchasing agreement for the five towns. Now, we do have a choice. We can say, no, we're not going to do this, and then we lose the $150,000 of federal money. I think all of us would rather have other things for the $150,000. Unfortunately, the decision before us is to take it or leave it. So that's the choice that we have. We have an opportunity here to take it, from which we can acquire the land, and at future town meetings, we can make decisions on how much of the trail we would like to build. But in the scope of this article is not to reopen the entire discussion over whether we each individually want a rail trail or don't want a rail trail. What we're looking here is voting to take this joint municipal contract and whether we take the $150,000 from the federal government or not. Thank you.
Gentleman at the side.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bob Sisk again, 76 Main Street. I have a question for Mr. Fredericks. I believe you're the Selectman assigned to this project?
To this article, yes.
Okay. My next question is, this is basically a situation that we are one of many towns. Am I correct?
Yes, five towns.
And all towns are going through a similar process that we're going to?
Yes.
And I take it that we're either at the end of the route or the beginning of the route? Am I correct?
Well, yeah, depends where you want to call it.
Exactly.
Between Marlborough and Acton.
So most of us came to Acton because we, we looked at the other towns, and they were nice towns. We liked them, but we wanted to stay in this town because of our schools, our standard of living, our quality of life in Acton. Now, we've heard about the quality of life improving or the quality of life not improving, but we like Acton. I love Acton. It's a very, very nice town. I've been here 20 years. I want Acton to stay a nice town. If I wanted to blend in with some other situation, I might go to Somerville, I might go to Chelsea and get blended into the city environment. But I like my environment here in Acton. It's been very good to me for the past 20 years. I want to maintain that quality of life. Now, I know I'm getting away from the question, Mr. Moderator, but... Now, I know I'm getting away from the question, Mr. Moderator, but it ties in here.
Yeah, please do tie it in.
I'll wrap it up.
No, no, please, when I want to speak, I want you to be quiet, okay?
Thank you.
Please bring your remarks to the point.
Okay.
And you're kind of broadening the point, and I'd like to keep it narrow on this particular motion in front of you. Go ahead, sir.
My question being, out of these other towns, where do they stand at this place in time? As far as, is there any progress report? How are they doing? Is there even need for us to go any further because there's serious problems in Maynard, as far as their approval or not approval? From what I understand on this motion, it's going to take all five towns to pass it, or it's going to fail. So are you prepared to?
Mr. Fredericks, go ahead, answer the question.
Is that a question?
Yes, it is, sir.
Yes, it is true that it'll take all five towns. All five towns are doing basically what we're doing. All five towns should be addressing only the fact of, are they going to join the joint contract in order to get their money from the federal government? Now, I would be fairly sure that the other towns will vote similar to Acton in the event that we all support taking $150,000 from the federal government for this program.
On one end of the aspect, from visual standpoint of view, if I was at a, I hate saying this, but I'm going to a lesser town, I would definitely vote yes to ride through Acton. But on the other side of the totem pole, do you actually know where these towns are voting, or don't you know where they're voting?
Mr. Fredericks?
I don't know the current status of each and every town, but again, the status of the other towns, whether or not you want to live or commute on a bicycle trail to another town, it's way beyond the scope of this article.
Well, I...
That's your...
Normally, I determine that, but...
Okay, sorry, Mr. Moderator.
It's all right, that's all right. I can understand why people wish to speak to the trail in general. I can understand that, but I'd really like you to limit your remarks to the contractual situation. If you don't want the trail, you can vote it down. If you do want the trail, you can vote it up, but just deal with the contract. Mr. Gretz?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. I was keeping to the contract. I understand that there's five towns involved in this contract, and those questions only had to do, my last questions, with those five towns.
I thought you were through, sir, and I was making a general comment to everybody. I recognize Mr. Gretz.
Yeah, Martin Gretz, Stowe Street in South Acton. In the interest of full disclosure, I'll tell you that I'm a member of the group that is promoting the bike trail, and I've been working with them for a couple of years. I can answer a couple of these questions, I think. First, the reason that we're having the vote tonight is because we didn't think it was going to be necessary last year. At that time, the state had indicated that it would deal with each town individually. It was sometime later in the summer that they changed their minds and decided they wanted to do a package deal. Now, these intermunicipal agreements are hardly uncommon. They happen all the time in dealing with regional interests. This particular vote only authorizes us to join with, as it turns out, actually, three of the other municipalities. The city of Marlborough already owns the entire rail bed within its boundaries. But the other three towns and Acton, the state wants to deal with us all together and make the transfer all in one contract. Now, the only way we're going to get that money is if we agree to do that. If we vote it down, then we fall behind. It doesn't put an end to the bike path. I want to remind people that the town of Acton already, and a much larger group of people than are here now, last year voted in favor of this. So the town has already made its wishes known in regards to whether we want the bike path or not. This is simply an administrative change. We've already voted for this money. We've voted to appropriate our matching funds. That money will go away, and we won't see it for anything if we vote it down, but we might be able to work with the state maybe in the next year or so. We'll just fall behind. Now, the interesting thing is that when the state does release the money, it will go not to each town individually, but it will go to what is called the lead town. The five towns petitioned for this grant two years ago, the lead town was Hudson. So Hudson will have our money, and they'll probably earn interest on it for as long as we don't get to use it. Just something to think about, I really don't know. To my knowledge, all of the other towns have voted their articles with language that allows them to enter into the joint agreement without having this extra vote. So in our case, we're just playing catch-up. We're really just asking for an administrative change to an agreement that we already voted last year.
Dr. Donald?
I move the question, Mr. Moderator.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye. Oh, say nay. Debate is cut off, we'll vote on the motion as read. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye. Oh, say nay. Motion's carried. We have done Article 39, we've done Article 40, we're now on Article 41, plowing of private ways. This was on the consent calendar. It came off the consent calendar. The motion is, Mr. Frederick moves that the town raise and appropriate $10,000 to be expended by the town manager for plowing of private ways open to public use as designated by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded, Mr. Frederick.
Mr. Moderator, is it in order to ask if the two people that held the article are still here and want to hold the article?
I think it's in order to ask if there's any questions, or should we just vote the article?
In that case, why don't I just do a very quick presentation? I know it's late, but it'll be quick. This is an annual article. And what it is, is it's a consideration towards the people who are paying their full pop on their taxes, happen to live on private roads that are quasi-public ways. So what we do is, we vote this every year, and we enabled this annual process back in 1986 under an MGL process, Mass General Law process. And what we do is, we go through a selection process that, I'm not going to go through all these in detail unless anybody has any questions, but I got all the back up. There's a bunch of conditions. Anybody that has a private way and wants to apply for plowing does so in September, roughly around September 15th. Roughly October, we do a public hearing process, and the selectmen take a vote by beginning of November as to what roads will be plowed, and it's simply an accrual. We keep track of the accounting, and we go up to the $10,000 number, and that number was approved previous town meetings. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Seeing, yes.
Jeff Alexander, 29 Windsor, just one quick question. Did we actually go up to 10,000?
Actually, no. Last year, we spent 7,500. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye. Oh, say nay. The motion is carried. We're moving on to the last article. Mr. Kavikoff moves to take no action. Do I hear a second? Mr. Kavikoff.
The Board of Selectmen recommends that we take no action.
Comments? Mr. Katie?
Seeing this is the last article, I, this is a free cash item, which we normally would vote if there was anything left to do with it.
Mr. Katie, excuse me, may I just interrupt you for a second, please? I'm sorry. I didn't hear from the Finance Committee, it was my fault. Let me just quickly do that. Mr. Mackey?
The Finance Committee...
We'll get you, sorry.
Finance Committee supports the issue. In fact, I'd like to give you an upgrade, an update on the status of free cash. If you remember, a long time ago, last Monday night, I talked about if you approved all the articles, there would be $1.185 million left in free cash. Right now, there's $1.273 million left in free cash. We recall that the $73,000 came out of Article 14. We strongly endorse you approve this motion.
Now, Mr. Katie?
I just was going to, that was one question I asked him, and I wanted to find out what the final amount on the override was going to be before we adjourn.
I have that number.
Mr. Fredericks?
Can I think it's time to make the announcement on the special election?
Yes, please do.
Yeah, we have voted on May 18th as a special election for the override ballot, and the amount of that override is $1,184,920.
All right, any other comment? Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read to take no action, say aye. Oh, say nay. We'll take the final motion to dissolve from somebody.
I move to dissolve this annual town meeting.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of dissolving the town meeting, say aye. Oh, say nay. 1999 town meeting is dissolved. My pleasure.